I'll call the council to order. With the hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I will call this council to order. Let the roll reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. First thing tonight, I'm going to ask Ashley Seaman and Terry Seaman to meet me here at the podium. What's the name of our two youngest citizens here? Come on over this way, guys, so they can see you on TV. Come on over. Hi. Hi, Jerry. How are you? Can you give me a bump? All right. How about you? All right. Sounds good. Terry and Ashley, and what's the boys' names?
Parker and Owen.
Parker and Owen? We want to thank you. Normally, the police -- Chief of Police is here to accept sizable contributions to the Police Department. Unfortunately, he got called away on business. So I have the honor to officially thank you on behalf of the Police Department for your donation of $500. And what's interesting about what the Seaman family has done is that they were on the hunt for the medallion and found the medallion, and when they received the prize money, they decided to donate it to the Hastings Police Department. And we are very grateful, and we wanted to recognize you tonight for doing so. And I'm wondering if you could tell us how you found the medallion and how you reached your decision. So Terry, or Parker, or Owen, or Ashley, any one of you. Come on up to the microphone.
Just out looking for it, and I was actually alone. I stumbled across it. We usually look as a family, and the kids weren't with. And then I found it. Me and her talked about it, so I went to donate the money. And we decided that the Police Department was a good fit for these times.
Okay. Well, that was really great. Well, thank you so much. And you know, when you have a young family like this, $500 certainly is always a lot of money, but when you have a family like this, $500 means a lot. And to be able to say, hey, we want to donate it to the community and to the Police Department, I think says a lot. And thank you so much for being so caring and generous. Thank you. And Parker, I bet you had something to do with that decision, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. All right. Thank you.
We're going to help them.
Okay. Yes. Oh, sure. Why don't we get it right in front here? Come on, guys. Let's go over here and get a picture. Do you stand next to me, Parker? Owen? Can you come over here and stand next to me? Oh, that's great. This one with the camera right over there. Okay? All right. That's perfect. Okay. One, two. One, two. Thank you. All right. Okay. Next guest here.
Nope. He, I sent an email out. He's ill.
Okay. Next, we'll have -- I'll have Dean Marcusen come up. And he's going to give us the latest update on the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Campaign here in Hastings. I might let everyone be reminded that Hastings was one of the very first communities to have that designation of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. We continue to work -- Dean's fine work to support Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. And he also has a special guest here tonight that we're going to introduce and hear from. So Dean, I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you, Dean. Welcome to the meeting.
Traditionally, you start out a briefing with a joke. However, I'm going to start out this briefing with my shortest speech ever given in 2003, 2004. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Hicks, City Council, and the residents of Hastings. The purpose of my visit this evening is to provide you an update on the community, military, and veterans services beyond the Yellow Ribbon initiative, and introduce you to my key partners, Kathy Bachman from the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs Higher Education, and Susan Register from the Hastings -- Volunteer Service Coordinator of the Hastings Veterans Home. It's been eight years since assuming the position as the Community Director, and at times, it's been a rugged road. However, with the community having my back covered, it has been a very pleasant experience of connecting with numerous partners. In your packet is the calendar of events that are programmed out to September 2017. So we're looking ahead in the future. I'd like to highlight some of the issues that are facing our military, and as I mentioned them, you'll see that they're no different than our citizens in Hastings. Transitioning, emergency services, financial, homelessness, comradeship, friendship. That's the same issues that are faced by our citizens in Hastings. So it's a common. While the exact population within the community is unknown, a conservative estimate would be around 1,500 military and veterans within this community. Within the county, we have over 13,000. So we have a lot of veterans in the county, and we're the largest, third largest, excuse me, within the state of Minnesota. So there's a lot of work to be done within the community and within the county. I'll summarize our vision, mission, and vision in two words. It's about empowerment. It's about togetherness. There are many ways to ask why we have initiative here in Hastings, and the response would be, in the state of Minnesota, there are no active duty posts. Many -- there are many Citizen Guard and Reserve soldiers, but they only gather together once a month for drill. So they're within our community, and the community has to support them. However, they have tremendous support exist within their chain of command. The Family Readiness Center that we have over in Rosemont, Family Readiness Consultants, nonprofits. So there's a lot of support. Within the veterans system, there's the Veterans Administration, the County Veteran Service Officer, and the local veteran service organization. American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, and one of our newest veteran service organizations in the community, the American Veterans. The key component within the community is outreach, which is the responsibility of the veteran service organization. But with any program, there has to be a fail-safe program. Example of some of our key community partners are United Way of Hastings, Hastings Family Service, the Hastings Veterans Home. Probably could go on and name a lot more. Many of us know the five Ps mean to effectiveness and efficiency to a business and organization. Therefore, I'm asking each partner, resident, government representative, business and organization, and medical and social services to be involved and help me accomplish the mission. I fully recognize you have busy schedules that do not allow attendance at organizational meetings, but your input is appreciated. Our next scheduled table talk is 22 September, Thursday, 6:30 or 7:00 at Second Street Depot Bar and Grill. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to one of my essential partners within the community, Kathy Bachman.
Welcome, Kathy. We're very glad to have you here, and we appreciate all the work that you do. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Like I said, my name is Kathy Bachman. I work for the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs, the Higher Education Veterans Program. Our program was established in 2006 to assist those service members coming home with their GI Bill benefits. We are on the college campuses, so we help them specifically with application. We help their family members with application. We've also created on-campus veterans resource centers, which host the VA Medical Center, the Vet Centers, and we also act as a referral system to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon organizations and to the VA Medical Center or any other agency that may need their assistance. There are 13 of us in the state of Minnesota. I live in Hastings. My host campus, like was mentioned, was Dakota County Tech, and I travel the South Metro down to Eden Prairie. And let me see, 13 of us. We do have one supervisor who's out of Detroit Lakes. Dave Belfei is the Director of Education and Employment, and he's at the central office in St. Paul. And I don't know what else I can say.
Well, we appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
And thank you, Council. Is there any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it.
And now, one of my partners that I work very closely with within the community, Susan Register.
Welcome, Sue. We're very glad to have you here at the council meeting, giving us an update and description of what's going on in the community. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I don't know if everybody really knows the composition of Hastings Veterans Home. We actually have veterans from the age of 26 to 93 and everything in between. We have every war and peacetime area from World War II all the way through the present conflict, all at that home. Each one has a disability of some type. They don't have to be military-related, but we have double amputees, we have blind vets, we have a lot of PTSD, mental illnesses, chemical dependencies, all of them in that one location. So you can imagine the dynamics at that location. But we are -- the most important thing right now that we're trying to do is we're having a Vietnam War commemoration event on the 50th -- for the 50th anniversary. And that is on September 2 at 6:30 at the Veterans Home. We have about 45 to 50, depending on the day and the admissions, Vietnam-era veterans at the home. And many of them are not in the position or the ability to go to any of the commemorations outside, so we're bringing the commemoration into the home. We're also inviting the community. Anybody that's a Vietnam-era veteran, which means anything in the early '60s all the way through '76. That was a long war. It was really a long war. So they're all invited with community members that want to support and thank them for this -- their service. As you all know, the Vietnam veterans did not receive a very welcome home situation when they came back. In fact, it was terrible. And so these events are to help -- I can't say make up for it, but at least show our support now for what they've done. Their efforts are what, in large part, are what has brought the benefits of our current veterans up to where it should be because of their fighting for it. So at the very first part of our commemoration, we will be dedicating a Minnesota POW/MIA site at the home, a protected place, a little rise on our back lot there with the large -- I mean, the nice stones underneath it. And that will be progressively getting larger and larger with different things as the VFW in Hastings is taking charge of that. So they will be putting benches in, they'll be putting a POW flag in, so it'll be kind of a nice thing. Then we'll go inside and have keynote speakers speaking to us about the war and the growth since the war and things like that, with a lot of -- our community TV is going to be helping with some of the presentations on that, too. So it should be a great event. Please come, enjoy yourself there, talk to our vets that are there. We love our community, and we hope to get rid of some of the stigma that is with our community members that -- of who we are. You know, we're in the former state hospital, and when I go around the community, it's kind of like, oh, you work on the hill, you know? And everybody remembers the jokes that they played up at the mental hospital when they were younger, but it is different now. It's housing our nation's heroes, and we do need to support them in any way we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
I'd like to highlight some of the other events that are happening around the same period. It's been a tradition in Hastings that in September, we have a Military Appreciation Weekend. From the 2nd to the 4th, out of Hidden Greens, all military and veterans golf free. And family members have rights. However, you have to make your reservation. Then, on the 3rd September, we traditionally have the Downtown Historical Cruze-In. It's going to be very special this year as we have partnership with some outstanding organizations, Support the Troops Haunted House from Farmington, and they have assisted in bringing in to Hastings the USA One Patriotic Monster Truck. So I think that's really going to be a beautiful sight. Basically, the current plan is that'll be on Sibley Street, leading to the American Legion. In addition to that, to anyone that came down for Rivertown Days, the Bells for Dignity will be returning to Hastings. What do they have? They have a boom truck that will be extended over Second Street with almost a Perkins-sized flag, a gigantic wooden carved statue of a soldier, boots, rifle, and all the other things. In addition, the Liberty Bell. We have a very fine organization from St. Paul coming down to visit with us that will deal with almost every issue that a soldier or veteran may have. So we got -- all those exhibits will be on Sibley Street, leading to the American Legion. So come on down to the Cruze-In and enjoy yourself and have fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you for that fine presentation, and please know Kathy and Sue and Dean that all the work that you do is greatly appreciated on behalf of the community and the care of our veterans. So thank you so much for all that you do. Okay, Council, our next item is the approval of the minutes. We have before us tonight the special regular city council minutes from those meetings. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, they stand approved. Council items to be considered? Any council items to be considered? Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Brox makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. That motion is now before the body. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we go to awarding of contracts and public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing in regards to the opt-out of temporary family health care dwellings. John, welcome to the meeting. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Tonight is an ordinance amendment to opt-out of the temporary family health care dwelling requirements that were passed by the state legislature. I'll give a little bit of background on what the regulations are, our rationale for opting out. Officially, the action tonight is a second reading, public hearing to consider the opt-out ordinance. Back in May this year, Governor Dayton signed a bill into law that required cities to allow temporary family health care dwellings unless the city passes an ordinance before September 1st of this year. What a temporary health care dwelling is, is kind of a small drop home, 300 square feet, something that could be put in a driveway, that could be used temporarily for members of the family for care for a six-month period. With the legislature's inaction, the ability for the city to make modifications and to pay for the cost that would be associated with managing this were not consistent. And so we did discuss this with the Planning Committee of Council and also with the Planning Commission. Both bodies recommending that we do opt-out of this ordinance so that we do not -- we are not obligated to follow or abide by the state legislative requirements related to this. So that is the extent of the ordinance provision tonight. This is a public hearing. You can open that at this time, or I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Let's open up the public hearing. Public hearing's open. Anyone here who would like to speak to the issue of the opt-out of temporary family health care dwellings? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, we'll go to this item. Councilmember Loggia.
Thank you, Your Honor. In a moment, I'll make a motion for this. I just want to explain from the Planning Committee perspective, and I'm speaking just as the chairman for myself, and other members can certainly speak for themselves. This struck me as an unfunded mandate from a state legislature that I know is trying to do good, smart things. I know the intentions are fine. We have a generation of folks, who bless them, are getting older, and we're trying to look for solutions for that. This seems to be a narrowly focused solution that was attempted to be applied to everywhere in Minnesota. And thank goodness, the legislature at least had the foresight to allow cities to opt-out. Many cities are, because this is, in essence, an unfunded mandate when you look at what the costs are to a city to try to comply and what would end up happening to a lot of -- in a lot of neighborhoods, which would not add an awful lot to our neighborhoods at all or our ability to really take care of those people that this statute's meant to take care of. I believe we are best -- we are best recommended to opt-out. So with that, I will make a motion for staff recommendation and committee recommendation to opt-out of the state statute per the provision within state statute to do so by September 1st.
Okay, the Chair of the Planning Committee, Councilmember Loggia, makes a motion to approve this recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to award of contract for the 2016 mil and overlay program. Nick, welcome to the meeting.
Thanks, Mayor Hicks. Good evening, council members. Engineering Department opened up six bids about a week and a half ago for 2016 mil and overlay project. And just to recap that real quick, that's General Seaman Drive from South Frontage Road down to around Carlton Drive, just south of 15th Street. It's one of our busiest traveled sections of road in the city, and we've been paying a lot of attention to it the last few years with pothole patching. So looking to make our bang for the buck here as great as it can be on a per-vehicle-affected ratio. Lowest bid came in just under $204,000, which was a very good price. That competition that we had drove the price down from where we thought it would be heading into the bidding, and we're about 37% lower than where we thought we'd be when we put it out on the street for bids. So it's very encouraging, and it's good news for the city in that we can spare those state aid funds that we're using for this project for things in the future, like next year's program. So in the end, we're recommending to award the contract, the McNamara Contracting, for Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nick, for that presentation. Council, this item is now before the body. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Your Honor. A question, Nick. Assessments. Do the residents of this area have to pay anything for this fine street project that we're going to do?
They will not, no. This is entirely funded from our MnDOT state aid account, gas tax money.
I knew the answer to the question, but I like to ask it anyway. With that, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have authorized signature purchase agreement for 11th and Vermillion Street, E&amp;R Investments. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. This may look familiar to you from the last meeting. This is a sale of property, of a city-owned property that is generally known as 11th Street, just south of the Walgreens property. It's not generating up the property lines, but it's just right in this area here. What's that? Oh, and it's not coming up at all on the screen, so you can't see anything.
I think you have a nighttime map.
Yeah, nighttime map, something like that. So we did have a letter of intent at the last meeting that we did authorize signature of. We have come back tonight with the purchase agreement. This would be for the .29 acres of land located just south of Walgreens. E&amp;R Investments would be purchasing this property along with this vacant property here owned by the Heiligers to put up a development on the site. And so the purchase and development agreement has a couple of parameters in there. Parameters are consistent with what the letter of intent stated a couple of weeks ago. The payment would be $7 a square foot, or about $88,000 altogether. They would close within about 130 days. It's also tied to the acquisition of the Heiliger property to the south. They also have provisions within the plans to acquire and develop this property if it becomes available, the Gubluff House just north of the Dairy Queen. If they're not immediately successful with development now, there is the provision upon the plans to incorporate this at some point in the future. And so as you are aware, the property here has been of some interest for some time for the city. This is a little bit different from the last plan that we had. It does not include the area to the east that the last plan that we looked at for purchase did. It would just be the property we own here and then the private property of the Heiligers at this location. So we do have Greg Hayes here available, if you have any questions for him. Otherwise, I can stand for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for that presentation. Council, this item is before the body. What is your wish? Councilmember Loggia makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brox. That motion is now before the body. Discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Council, next on our agenda is comments from the audience. Is there any comments tonight from the audience? Seeing none, council announcements. Any announcements? Councilmember Balsanick.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a meeting at 8:00 a.m. on Thursday with the Board of Directors for the Dakota Communication Center.
Okay. DCC. Okay. Thank you. Any other announcements, Council? Councilmember Schultz.
The Finance Committee will be meeting from 8 until roughly noon on Wednesday morning to discuss budget.
This Wednesday, from 8 to noon? Okay? Thank you, Councilmember. Okay? Any other announcements? Seeing none, I have a few. First of all, we would like to extend a very happy birthday to Councilmember Balsanick, Joseph. Happy birthday. That's going to be on this Thursday, August 18. And what do you have plans for your birthday that day?
Well, I'm starting out the morning with the Board of Directors meeting.
I'm sure they'll have cake.
All bright and early. After that, the carpet cleaners are coming.
Sounds like you have a fun, productive day planned.
But I -- well, and it will be highlighted by attending a performance at the Guthrie Theater of South Pacific.
Oh, fantastic.
Where I hope I don't stand up and start to sing along with the lead, because I did play the lead role about 1,000 years ago of Emile Debek singing "Some Enchanted Evening."
Well, there you go.
And along with that, I thought I should note that August 18 is also the anniversary date of the discovery of helium gas.
So kind of going along with the singing. With that singing voice, perhaps?
Yeah, with the singing voice. And it may lend some credence to my pontifications from time to time here at the council.
If you go to Guthrie, I hope you dress down a little bit than you are tonight.
I'm going to bring corn for everybody.
Okay, sounds good. Looks like you're going to a production of Hee-Haw.
I can take my tooth out if you want. For those of you in television land, it was either change clothes or have dinner, and I decided to have dinner, so.
I think you made the right decision.
Yes. But thank you very much for those birthday greetings.
Happy birthday on behalf of everyone.
It's my -- It's my, let's see, it's the forty-ninth, fifty-first, no, thirty.
Yeah, don't get it wrong.
Thirty-first anniversary of my fortieth birthday, something like that.
There you go. Still a young guy yet.
Now that everybody's totally confused, I still feel like I'm forty.
Well, that's good. Well, happy birthday, wish you the best. The Planning Commission will be meeting on Monday, August 22nd at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. The Hastings Loop Community Transportation Service Ribbon Cutting will be on Friday, August 26th at 9:00 AM at Tilden. And Acting Mayor Schultz will be there to give a few words on behalf of the city. Thank you, Councilmember, for that. The Art Space Groundbreaking will be on Tuesday, August 30th. That will be at 3:30. I believe we are meeting at the Pavilion first for a short program, and then after that, Council, we'll be going to the site for the groundbreaking. So put that on your calendar, 3:30 Tuesday, August 30th, Art Space Groundbreaking, meet at the Pavilion. City offices, as a reminder to everyone, will be closed on Monday, September 5th, which is the Labor Day holiday. And our next regular city council meeting will be on Tuesday, September 6th at 7:00 PM. Also on that day, the Finance Committee is scheduled to meet at 6:00 PM that evening, just prior to council, to discuss a request by a lineup. Council, we have no further issues before us. A motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Nelson makes that motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. That's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we adjourn. Thank you, everyone.